Good evening, everyone. Apologies for the slight late start, but I am reconvening to open session, the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is May 18th, 2022, 7:04. We have already established that we have a quorum. And I would just want to remind everyone, and I'm going to check myself, that you have silenced your cell phones. And if you could join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. So our first item of business this evening is to approve the regular and closed session meetings. Sorry, the regular and closed session meetings of April 27th, 2022, and May 5th, 2022. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or edits to the minutes? Hearing none. In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved. So payment of bills. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of bills in the amount of $705,420.74?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the bills? All good? Okay, in that case, could the secretary please call a roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Boosdy?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Mr. Gugliotta?
Yes.
Ms. Downing? Ms. Lanoi?
Is absent.
I vote yes, Ms. Brown.
Yes. The bills are paid. So PTA report, do we have a representative? Oh, good, from PTA this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Last month, PTA hosted the support staff appreciation breakfast on 27th and teachers appreciation luncheon on 29th. This month, on the first week, we celebrated Teachers Appreciation Week with a teacher survival get out with goodies to show the staff and teachers our appreciation for all they do for our students. On May 6th, we hosted the multicultural night with 24 countries presenting the tables with four performances and wide variety of food from 22 countries. We would like to thank teachers, students who contributed, as well as staff, admin, and our Fairview community for its great success. School supply kits for next year can be ordered online through June 12th, and the kids will be delivered to their home. Parents are preparing for the upcoming events, which are the eighth grade graduation party on May 27th, eighth grade reception on June 2nd, classroom parties, which the parents are very excited to be in person this year, and the field day, which is on June 6th. Thank you.
Wow, super busy end of the year, and so good that all those events back in person again. That's really good news. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So school activity report. Does the board or administration have good news to share from the district?
Hello, board. I do have some good news. After a bit of time, we have finally decided to launch our new website. So I'm actually going to give you guys a little bit of a demonstration right there on the board. This project took about a year long of work. So let me just refresh it real quick. Couple of things that we wanted, our goal for this project was to make sure that everything was very transparent for the parents, easier to find things. So you'll notice just a nice little intro with some drone footage. First thing up is our events page, so parents can scroll through all upcoming events within the district. Next up are our quick links. We've updated these from our old website, so to be more relevant. And these are things that can easily be changed over time. So our Fairview Crisis Hotline, Power School, the school calendar, so parents can all see, you know, when the next school day is off and so forth. We've included also some others, including the Village of Skokie and the ELL Parent Center. Going through, this is our banners. We're doing more custom banners for our advertising. So for instance, talking about our return registration, social media is, you're now learning, is also growing. We're expanding to Instagram, Facebook, and our YouTube channel. Scrolling back down, we're also going to be posting some more of our news articles, so things that are happening within the district. It could be also communications that were sent out that we feel are of importance that need to be posted here as well. Very simply, you click on the news article and it opens up expanded so that you can read it. Moving down a little bit, this is going to be on the left-hand side, our social media feed. What is nice about this is that it's going to be merging all three of our social media platforms, our Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook. But I know, you know, some people like to see, you know, the photos. So you can very simply click on Instagram. As soon as we post something after this meeting, you'll start seeing all the different Instagram posts. So it's a nice way to filter out. And the right-hand side is just our full calendar that you can go diving into. And then we end with our mission statement right here, and then also our equity statement. Across the entire website, what you will notice is that we have enhanced our visibility of our teachers and all our staff members. So we have included photos of all our teachers so that our community really gets to know who they are. Because, you know, one thing that a lot of people come to the website for is if they're just starting at Fairview, they want to meet their teachers. This is a great way for a kid to be able to say, oh, that's Mrs. Kara, you know, she's going to be your next year's teacher and so forth. We also included in this is our support staff. And let me just decrease this a little bit. So even with our support staff, we've included our bus drivers, the kitchen, because again, these are all people that are part of your kids' lives, or all our students. We want them to know who they are, and it's important to us. But that is our new website. It'll constantly be updated and upgraded over time. So yeah. So definitely reach out and follow us on Instagram now as well as Facebook.
That's really good. Thank you, Patrick. I really like those dropdown menus where it's spaced out more with the bold headings and things underneath. It's much easier to find than just a straight list.
Yeah, we really tried to make sure that everything can be seen easily, so you're not digging into menus.
Yeah.
And also, some of the pages are under multiple headings. So for instance, the crisis hotline is under all of them.
Yeah.
Community and student engagement is under all of them, so that, because they sort of fill different categories.
Yeah.
So we want to make it easier for people to find.
I like the idea, so that it's actually easier to find things. It's not just in one spot that you have to track down. You can find it in various places. That's a really good idea. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Yeah, congratulations to you and the team for putting that together. The user interface on that looks amazing. You know, I think this is going to be a great way for the community to engage and learn more about the school, learn more about teachers and what Fairview has to offer. So good work. Thank you.
The drone footage is fun, too.
It is a favorite pastime.
Thank you very much. Is there any other good news from the district anyone wants to share?
I just had the opportunity last week to attend the orchestra concert, which was, the orchestra and choir concert, which was outstanding. And I'm really looking forward to the band concert, which will be tomorrow night. And so it's been really exciting to be back in the building and listening to the kids playing music.
I love it.
It's been great.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Kajal Shaw, who has left, but she was very humble in her report about multicultural night. And there was over 24 countries represented. The large gym was completely filled with tables representing everyone's different diverse cultural backgrounds. Our students were dressed in their cultural, you know, dresses. And it was, there was food. It was amazing. And it was, I think, our biggest turnout in years, according to what everyone has told me. And it was just a really amazing night to see Fairview represented in that way. And it was a really accurate representation of our community and who we are here at Fairview. So it was just kudos to the PTA for all their planning, especially Kajal and Steve, our PTA co-presidents, because they really made that night happen, so.
That's wonderful.
Also, one note. Today, we found out that, once again, we are a distinguished school for Project Lead the Way, which is awesome. And Mr. Corey does a great job of making sure that that program is showcased and always is on top of making sure he report back to us when we do find out that we get things like distinguished schools. I think we're one of 184 across the country that get the title of a distinguished school. So that was really, really exciting.
And that's been consistent, right, for the last?
Yeah, I was, I think, since they've given those categories or those being distinguished, I know we've gotten it as a district, as a school. So there's a couple of different ways that that's categorized. But yeah, we've gotten it, I think, every, every year.
That's wonderful. Great. Do pass our congratulations to Mr. Corey. Anyone else? Lots of good news at the end of the year. Okay, so moving on to our administrative reports. The first one I have on my list here is the social studies curriculum report from Mr. LaPaca.
Yeah, we're really excited to introduce, you know, not only our principals who have been working on the social studies curriculum with our social studies curriculum team, but also Ms. Joanne Roller, who is here tonight, who has been our consultant, who has worked with us since last summer. And she is going to, along with Mike, walk the board through our process, the work that our staff have done, and what our recommendations are in terms of a curriculum adoption to be implemented next school year. So I don't know if Joanne or Mike, you want to start? Which of you is starting first? But the presentation should be up on your laptops. You should be able to see it.
I want to make sure to introduce Joanne, too. I feel like she deserves that, at the very least. So Joanne has worked with the team, Committee of Teachers, representatives from all grade levels across kindergarten through eighth grade. And just really from the beginning, her, Joanne's wealth of experience, working at all different levels and at the college and university level as well, as well as working with many of the companies or worked with many of the companies that we looked at and when we started looking at resources and kind of talking about the vision of where we want our social studies curriculum to go. So just want to make sure that I did that before Joanne takes it away with her presentation. So thank you.
And, and I have, I have a little bit of good news before I start. And hopefully, yeah, I think it's something that everybody in the room and everybody should know. It was such a pleasure. It's been such a pleasure working with these administrators and teachers. And I don't, I don't say that to everyone, and I've done it across the country. And I have to say that I can't tell you how fortunate you are to have these teachers and these administrators. And I truly, I'm also the daughter of a superintendent, so I've been around for a long time in education. And I truly noticed so many good, positive things going on. The administrators were engaged. They asked all the right questions. They wanted to know about the resources. They wanted to know about the changes coming down from ISBE. The teachers were engaged. They, when they were reviewing resources, again, they asked all the right questions and really wanted to do, worked very, very hard. We're still working to make sure we have good resources and good education and good learning experiences for all the children in this district. And it was really an amazing experience. And I, and I have to say that every bit of it has been worthwhile, and it will pay off to everybody in this district. And I think that that's really remarkable. Doesn't always go that way. Okay, so, okay, that being said. There have been a lot of changes in social studies coming down in the last three, four years, certainly in the last two years. You're probably aware of a lot of them. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about them. So first of all, as you know, there's new Illinois learning standards. They're still in their draft form, but there are not many changes from the group that meant to make those changes. I think there have been some real worthwhile changes, but they're not finalized yet. They are, however, in draft form and will have, will go into effect in the fall. But there have been some instructional shifts, which is actually the part that I think is, you would like to know more about. So when the shifts occurred, and by the way, this is something that's been coming about in social studies since I was in college decades ago, and has never come to fruition. And it finally is, which is, again, something else that's very encouraging. So teachers are being asked to change the way they think about student roles in social studies classes. Many of you who studied social studies in school probably remember whether it was elementary through college, being told to read something, read a text, answer questions, take a test. And there has been much controversy over the years about the way social studies should be taught. When you train people, I taught methods classes in college, you tell them to teach social studies as you would teach science, that kids should be like historians. But I don't think anybody really could figure out exactly how to do it. So we're making some steps towards that that I think are very, very powerful. And by changing the role of students, that's what we're doing. So we're asking them to take a more active role in their learning process. We're not just presenting them with information and say, this happened, these are the facts, now you tell me. So the way the standards are now set up is there are the disciplines, which is like the history, the geography, the civics, the economics. But the first set of standards is inquiry. The way it's meant to be is the other strands of social studies, which are the content, are meant to be taught through inquiry. So this is something really new for students in social studies. So they're being asked to ask questions, discover answers, communicate their learning, and apply then what they have learned. As I just said, these are the strands. And focus is not on memorization, but rather an understanding of complex concepts with an emphasis on knowledge and skills that can be translated across grades. So you don't just teach something. We're looking how to build, identify the skills kids need in social studies, like we do in all our other subjects, and then build on them vertically. So the case for inquiry is, as I said, just presented to you, that it's the way we're going to be teaching. And this takes a lot of professional development initially, because it's easy to understand. It's a little bit more difficult to actually use and put into practice. So the standards are divided into three different sections. Developing questions and planning inquiries, which is done, for the most part, by teachers in conjunction with students. Evaluating sources, using evidence, teaching them how to evaluate sources, teaching them media literacy, and in the end, communicating conclusions, and then taking informed action. So how are they going to use all this to become a good citizen, to become someone who knows how to find information, take it in, process it, synthesize it, and ultimately use it? So this is why inquiry-based learning is important, all right? We want kids to be more creative, positive, and independent, to develop the skills I just discussed, to ask questions, to cope with problems that may not have clear solutions, or they may have multiple solutions. Because throughout history, if we look at different viewpoints, we will see that. Deal with changes and challenges to understandings and shape their search for solutions, not just in school, but as adults. So we looked at some different resources. I'm going to talk about the one that we looked at for K-5. And fifth grade is going to have the option, I believe, to use both, which I'll explain why. Actually, the elementary will be able to use the other also, because it's online. But this is what we're going to use, what they're going to use in K-5. And it's called, as you can see, Learning and Working Together. It's Impact is the name of the resource. And the program author has a quote there that I think is, gets to the core of this, that we're going to teach students to read words and the world. Reading the world requires students to question assumptions and paradigms and to use knowledge to make the world more just and humane. This is and should be a critical goal of social studies education. This is what is in Impact, and it's exactly what we just talked about. So it's fit really well with the new standards. And this is, by the way, a new, this was just written when the inquiry, when the standards came out, so it's a, it's a, it's a new resource. So here's how it works. There's different components to this. There is an inquiry journal. That's the first one, where kids engage with the material. Then they investigate. There's two different ways to investigate. There's a hardcover book that does have information, biographies, and a lot of background information. And then there is like a magazine, the Explorer Magazine. And finally, they go back to the first, the inquiry journal, after they've done all the research, the investigation, and then they report their findings. So that's the elementary K-5 resource. And the other resource is Discovery Ed Techbook. Good news for you, because you're one building. When this is purchased, you'll actually have access to the elementary program also, which I've never had happen before, because if you have another building, then they license it by building. So that was a, that's kind of a win-win. So this is the other, and it is Discovery Ed Techbook. And Mike, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, I can chime in, just being a part of all of the process of McGraw-Hill Impact and Discovery. The Discovery, what we noticed as we were doing this, that it was somewhat at times challenging, because a lot of the companies and resources we looked at did not go across kindergarten through eighth grade as well as we would like, just with us being a K building. And so in the past, we've done the same thing where K-5 in social studies has been different, six, eight, having previously taught that. I was part of that conversation the last time that we made an adoption. And then I was kind of wondering how things have changed since. And it seems that it has changed in the sense where they're trying to make all the resources as user-friendly for all students across different grade levels. But as we were going through the process of looking at all the resources, our sixth through eighth grade team kept really going back to discovery education. And what is great about it is in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in our social studies curriculum, there are three very different curriculums in the sense that sixth grade is more of the Western civilizations, building connections from previous ancient civilizations and how they're relevant in the world today. And then seventh grade, we do world geography and looking at, you know, answering questions about the world that is around us in the sense of like how we fit into that in the United States. And then eighth grade is more of a traditional United States history class and our impact in the United States and obviously around the world. So Discovery Education did an amazing job bridging all of those things together, but then making it have some connectedness across each of those classes in exactly what it says up on the screen and building critical thinking, empathy, and citizenship skills. Those are all really relevant strands throughout the whole program. And what Joanne was alluding to is Discovery has a platform. They call it their learning platform that has every single subject area, from science to social emotional learning, to music, to social studies, to math, to everything, to where students in all, at all grade levels can access their platform and utilize their resources and activities for all those different domains. So we all have access to that. So we started to introduce it to teachers already, that if you log into Discovery Education, and let's say you want to type in physics, and you type it into the search bar on the teacher end of things, you can assign activities, videos, virtual field trips, all these different things to students that are in your class. So although we're getting the social studies techbook for grade six through eight, we'll have the learning platform for all grade levels, which is absolutely, which is amazing. And this, oops, sorry, clicked fast on the screen or on your computers. This is what it looks like a little bit on the teacher and student side of things, is that there are all these different tiles that have different categories that students can click on and be able to visit. And as I mentioned before, virtual field trips from places all over the world. When I speak to physics, I mentioned that because that was one of the topics I looked up. I was absolutely miserable in physics in middle school and high school. But then I typed in physics. I don't know if it just is a traumatic thing that sticks with me. And they have access to all of these different physicists and scientists at their places of work, showing kids what they do in their jobs in the real world. So again, I'm not even speaking directly about social studies, but that was just one example of like a virtual field trip that can be used for any of the different grades. So Global News is another strand, using media outlets. It mentions Reuters as a news program for students to be able to get up-to-date current news daily. I mean, they're updating the site all of the time. So really exciting. And, you know, I can speak a little bit to this, Joanne, just because we'll be in the part of the process together. But the completed and continued work that we've done, the completed work we've done, like we said, has been really great. But I think the team and the committee is really looking and itching to get back together to start looking at some of that vertical alignment and start coming together as teams to look at units and discuss how we're going to use these resources in classrooms. And we're really excited to have Joanne a part of that process as a voice to help them in all of our experience, looking at inquiry and how they can use it in classrooms next year and beyond. So that's kind of where we're headed. I know we wanted to leave some time for questions. Joanne, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, but thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
We did have the Education Technology Committee take a look at all of this last week. So I don't know if Nora or Diana had anything further to add from our discussion there. They had an opportunity to actually hold the materials in their hands and thumb through them and whatnot, which is kind of nice. I don't know if either of you had anything to add.
I physically was holding them and going through them, and it looked really informative, had a lot of pictures, a lot of stories. Oh, there was like a graphic. Graphic novel. I thought that was cool. I know my kids like that, and they'll grab their attention really well and get them to engage a little bit more in certain topics of history. I thought, I liked that, that that was good.
Yeah. I know Mike taught social sciences forever, but this is also following the theme of a lot of like the science standards, too, of this inquiry base that's giving the students the control to investigate and think critically, which I think is fantastic. I did double, I mean, I asked a little bit about how many members of the Delt team were on this, given the fact that this content really speaks to a lot of social emotional learning and worldwide learning. And it was over 50% of the committee that reviewed this is also part of our Delt team. So I think the One Fairview Equity theme is definitely weaved through this, and it was looked at with a pretty significant lens in that regard to make sure that a lot of our students will see themselves in a lot of this text and in conversation. So that was going to be part of my report, so my report's going to be shorter.
Thank you. I didn't mean to put either of you on the spot, but you did have a chance to. Okay.
I personally appreciate that it, it's not just that a textbook has been purchased, it's been put in the classrooms and just go teach it. I mean, you talked about the interactive platforms for one. I mean, obviously, that's a new innovation that wasn't around certainly when I was in school. But.
One more thing.
But the following up after, to, to really implement it makes a lot of difference.
One other thing I wanted to just say about this is, as a teacher, having the curriculum in your hands all summer and having you as a resource. And Mike said that some of the kids, some of the teachers are already pulling it in as end-of-the-year stuff, like that is huge, to be able to have that time to digest it and plan around it. So nice job bringing it on board.
Yeah, I was going to mention that our sixth grade team, specifically, all of our teams working really well together, but they were constantly emailing Joanne and trying to get access and get the kids onto the site for discovery and start doing lessons. And they've actually done a few lessons of inquiry that have led to some really neat, some neat things in our building, too. We have some advertisements up and around the building about all these different businesses that are around the world that the students investigated in ways to be able to give back to them. And that came from our team and Joanne, so. And that came from our team and Joanne, so.
And I appreciate your comment, Nora. Unless you've worked in a different school, you probably don't, you know, understand, but our intention is always to adopt materials for next year around this time so that we can place the order, we can receive the materials and put them in the hands of teachers during summertime when, you know, they have busy summers and lots of plans and they need a break for sure, but they also have the time to kind of let things soak in a little bit. And to be able to do that for them, you know, we appreciate the board support. And it's a team effort, you know, Jeff makes sure the finances are where they need to be so we can get everything ordered and Cassio receives everything and unpacks it right away. And so that doesn't happen everywhere. So thank you for sharing that.
Process went very smoothly, given exactly that with Cindy and Mike and Colleen. I just want to add too that they both also are constantly being updated because they're online versions, so they change every year. You're not buying a resource that will become stagnant in a couple of years, which most social studies textbooks. You know, the information didn't, but the, the learning strategies did. And they also have current events and a wealth of primary sources.
That's great. Thank you very much. Any other quick questions before we move along?
I have a question. So McGraw Hill, that's bringing pretty well-known resources. Like, do they, I'm not in the education field, or do they have like dozens of options? Or is it, I mean, is it a big shift or is it kind of updated, but a well, you, I mean, a commonly used resource?
Okay, so most, as in most industries, most publishing companies have bought each other and there's just very few publishing companies right now. But if you look, there'd be three or four within it. Because they bought them, they've merged. Okay? So there aren't a whole lot of options. Here's the other thing, because schools get resources in cycles. And so publishers deal with that, you know, they, every so many years, there'll be something new or they'll add some additions. When this inquiry shift, the C three standards and the inquiry shift happened. McGraw Hill is the one that saw that coming, knew it because it was in the C three standards that were shared with the states. So they wrote this literally just to deal with these standards in this curriculum. And they were, I don't know if you know anything about textbooks, but California and Texas by one state, one textbook for every student in the state. So you're taking social studies in Texas or California, you've got the same text. And they were chosen in California to start with in the beginning. So that was their first foray into with this new resource. And ever since then, it's obviously grown across the country, but not a lot of them, what a lot of them did, because they weren't in the cycle of writing a new one, because it takes years to. What they did is they made additions to what they had. So they might add a little inquiry. But it wasn't being taught through inquiry, if that makes sense. So no, we looked at, we definitely looked at other options. As Mike said, I know, you know, most of these resources, there are some new ones coming out in inquiry, but I don't think we know enough about them yet, or they're to the point where they would be, you know, ready. And discovery has been around for quite a while, but because it's constantly updating. And they also have a huge inquiry component to it that they've added. So yes, I hope, does that answer your question? Or yeah, there aren't there aren't a whole lot out there, you know, and company.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this common, like every three years, a cycle to look at curriculum? That was another question.
No, typically the cycle is more lengthy, usually closer to about a six or seven year cycle. Because you're rolling through each of your academic areas. So there's math, there's reading, there's science, social studies. We hit programs as well, so special education or EL or so it's more, it's a longer period of time typically. With this being three years and constantly updating, you know, we'll have to see how we're feeling about the program after we've been working with it for a couple of years and whether we want to just renew after three years, or if we want to go out and investigate all over again. So that'll be to be determined. Okay.
Yeah. And as I don't know if some of you know, but social studies became kind of the the evil stepchild in the curriculum world. And I'm sure Cindy can address that was what happened is when you started getting new math programs, new reading programs. They would bump social studies a lot. And I've been into districts where they haven't even looked at resources in social studies for six, seven, eight years. So yeah, that's.
And I would think that social studies is one that is ever-changing. I mean, math is math. Although there's obviously new approaches to teaching math, math is still math. But social studies and, you know, the political word is changing minute by minute almost.
And I would say more important now than ever.
Yeah, that's the advantage of the digital platform too, that, that can be constantly updated with, with new facts and informations. So.
I have to tell my college students it was the most important thing they would ever learn. It was these stuff. I have a whole argument for it, which you don't want to hear, but.
Thank you very much for your explanation this evening. I really appreciate it. I think we're covered on this. Everybody's happy. And we'll be taking action on this later on in the evening. Thank you very much, Mike. So next on my list is the master's facility plan with a presentation from Mr. Hayes.
Yes, we have Jack Hayes with us this evening, and we are going to hear about sort of the next round of bid packages that we're asking the board to approve this evening. So welcome, Jack. Nice to see you.
There we go. Thank you for having me. Good to see you all again. So you got a little primer on this last week when we had a couple of bid packages that we were able to get in front.
A little, a little hard to hear you.
Sure. Thank you.
There we go.
So there was a little primer last week on a couple of the bid packages that we put in front of you that you, you accepted our recommendation. This one is a little lengthier. So there's total of 14 bid packages that are in the recommendation letter to you. That is, that's not everything. There's still a couple that we're vetting through the process and making sure that basically we dot our i's and cross our t's in the process of going through the scope reviews with those trade contractors. So there will be a few more of these that we'll come back to you with. But the recommendation that we have in front of you is for 14 packages of the low responsive responsible bidders based on our review. And scope of their, of their proposal to us. In large measure, these are all pretty straightforward and the low bidder is the, is the recommended. We did have one low bidder in plumbing that, as outlined in our package. And our scope review identified a fundamental error in their proposal and has asked to have their bid withdrawn, which is, it's not a welcome sight, but it does happen from time to time. And if there's been an honest mistake, we go through that process and make a recommendation to go to the second bidder. And so that's, that's where we're at. Any questions?
Well, it was quite a lot to digest with all those bids and all that information, all those numbers, but
Yes.
Thank you for laying it out in the letter like that, that we could recede it, you know, read it concisely paragraph by paragraph. Does anybody have any questions about the bids?
Are you familiar with all the firms that we are awarding? Have you worked with them?
Yes, we are. There are some that we've worked with more than others, but we have experience with all of the contractors that are on the list of recommendation.
I did notice in a couple of things, I'm seeing one here, there was only two two actual bids to consider. Is that unusual or is that? I think it was the.
Oh, I would say it depends on the trade and in this bidding climate. It's, I would say it's not unusual. You know, we always strive for more and we try to get more interest, but it's, it's really dependent on that specific trade.
In the past, you had mentioned that a number or a couple of the packages were being sort of retooled and resubmitted because we didn't have enough bidders or the bids that were coming back far exceeded sort of the, the budget. How do these, are these all fitting within sort of the, the expected budget for these particular areas?
Well, to your, to kind of your first point, there is one package that we are going to be rebidding, and that is earthwork. We've gone through a design update with the engineering team to approach the earthwork package, which is excavation and grading and so forth. A little differently than their original concept. So that package is going to be rebid. In the case of these other, other trades and the ones that we're still vetting them through. As we go through this process, there is some more scope evaluation that we're doing so that we can make sure that we can provide the best price to the district. And these are the, these are the recommended base bid contracts for these contractors. And as we work through that process, we are looking for some more savings as, as we go through some somewhat of a VE process.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
What the, the amount that's being awarded in this and with these bids? Is it, would you kind of give a percentage of what the total project is like 50% of the total project? Is it, do you know roughly?
Of the trade contractor cost, including the ones that we awarded last week with these. It's probably like two thirds of the, of the total value of the project.
Okay.
Thank you. So we're well on our way then.
We are with, with tonight. This, this is a big majority of the work that we have to do to keep moving.
Sounds wonderful. Okay, I think we're, we're good. Well, thank you very much for coming along this evening. I'm giving us these regular updates so we, we know what's going on. A lot of the information to take in, but I feel we're in good hands with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next on the list is my report on the Board of Education training. So this is kind of really a summary for us. And certainly I'm going to summarize it, but if you want to add to it, please do so, but it's kind of more a summary for the public benefit for them to learn what the board was working on in this last month. So with our representative from IASB Dean Molinari, we did a board training on the fifth of May. And prior to the training, there was a self-evaluation survey, which each board member completed. And then at the training, we were evaluating the responses to that survey. And how they fit with the six foundational principles of effective governance. Which is the guidance of the IASB. So we had a, about a two hour meeting to discuss all this. And there were some recommendations that we came up with. Which are our goals essentially as a board and as a, as a school district for the coming year. We amended the introduction to the opening and closing of the public comment section of the board meeting. We, the board members wanted some input as to how that actually was was, was done each time. One thing we were, we're going to be tasking our Director of Community and Student Engagement. With the, the role of monitoring and reporting the community engagement metrics. So in other words, just actually putting numbers on the community engagement and we can hopefully establish where we're in need of connecting with the community in, in better. We wanted to put out to the community more information and explanation about the actual role of the Board of Education. Our plan is to have something on our website. And possibly have some kind of information session. And a table at curriculum night, and this is especially important since obviously next spring is an election year for members of the Board of Education. So we wanted to be clear to the members of the public exactly what the role involved and what the role of the board is. We're planning to develop a policy subcommittee to review the board policy manual of the school. In particular with an equity lens. This has been something that's been brought up by Aaron in the past and other board members. And it's quite a task. Obviously, there's considerable poor policy, but obviously not everything needs that equity lens. Some things are more mundane than others, but we wanted to take that on as a a subcommittee to, to review that going forward and certainly to review any press updates that we received for policy with that equity lens. We wanted to promote the district equity statement by including it in our board policy and student handbooks. We've already seen it from Patrick that it's going to be on our website. And lastly, we wanted to task Superintendent with the job of developing social emotional metric to measure and ensure the social emotional well-being of all the students. And the effectiveness of special programs such as spin out intervention and their general academic achievement. I think this is a recognition that COVID has had a very serious effect on our students. Obviously, people view it in terms of academics. But we all know that it's actually social emotional well-being as well. So to try and actually formulate and report that so that we can understand where our needs are in the school and where we need to do some work. So that's, as I summarized it, if any other board member has anything else to add, by all means, chime in. But that was the the goal and result of our training. Anybody? Okay, doc. So next we have Superintendent Report.
Yeah, I will just hit a few highlights that haven't been covered or won't be covered during this meeting. FOIA responses. I apologize for the oversight of not including the FOIA requests in your packet originally. You should have them by now, and we have updated the public facing board packet with those responses. We had several FOIA requests related to the bidding, which I understand now is typical. Vendors want to obtain, you know, the, the numbers so that they can use that for their, you know, research going forth with their own bidding process. We are in the midst of finalizing summer curriculum projects. I am always proud to see the creativity and the willingness of our staff to dedicate time over the course of the summer to continue to improve their craft. More proposals and more people interested than we have budget for. But we're going to work through that because it's a really great way to continue to improve our programs. Jeff and I have been working on various reporting related to S R funds. So that is always a fun task and we are preparing support personnel contracts for next year. So that's all of our instructional aides, bus drivers, kitchen staff, et cetera. So we're working through that process. And then, you know, the construction project. Erin, you touched upon it. We have been working with the team to find ways to trim dollars from the budget that won't impact teachers or students. Or programs, instructional programs, you know, that are dependent upon the work. So you know, things like type of pipe make a difference, but in terms of cost, but don't necessarily make a large difference to the overall outcome of the project. So kind of going through line by line, that process so that we can keep this project within budget. That's very important to all of us. But also keeping it moving at the same time and not compromising the overall outcome. So you know, that has been a good process, but one, you know, that's time consuming, but, but necessary. So we're very mindful of that and we'll continue to update the board as some of those changes are sort of sorted out and formalized more significantly. So but that's pretty much the highlight. If there are any questions, like I said, much of this is being talked about through other reports tonight.
Is there any questions? Okay, so next we have the first reading of the board policies for revision. We, you know, this is our usual sort of block of policy amendments that we receive from IASB Press. And I'm pleased to say that there really isn't too many changes this year, or this time around, I should say. The next one is usually the big one because that happens after. The next one is usually the big one because that happens after legislation has happened in the summer. So basically, all the policies are either unchanged or just actually a five year review, which usually results in small changes to the text and small changes to the cross references, legal references. But the ones that we really do need to address, I wanted to just chat about this evening, but we do know that there may be some other things that we need to look into on these and therefore obviously we won't be voting on it this, tonight. We always have to do it over the two month period. So the first one I have that we, we need to consider and I wanted to draw the board's attention to is the two colon two thirty, which is a public participation at school board meetings and petitions to the board. The board has it in the packet and you can see the changes that are, are being suggested in the green text and the, and the red shaded text would be removed. There, there is one thing that we need to investigate and that is the fact that it cross references with three colon thirty chain of command. And that actually is a policy that we don't have in place right now. So we're not quite sure if that text needs to be kept and adopt that policy to go with it or whether we would admit that text. Cindy and I have discussed this and we'll be taking that up with our legal counsel to verify that before we vote on it next month. The other main changes and what is needed to be considered by the board is whether we actually establish a maximum time limit for public comment at board meetings. There have been instances where boards have actually tried to cut short the public comment and sometimes quite radically, like, you know, 15 minutes tops. We've certainly never done that, in fact, we've never stopped public comment. But we could establish a maximum time limit if we wanted to. But the text that, that presses suggestion, suggesting actually still includes a sentence that stipulates that in the moment at the time, it may be extended on a majority vote of board. So that's something for board members to consider whether we want to have a maximum time. And if you want to give that some thought, we'll discuss that further next month and decide which way we want to fall on that particular question. Any thoughts about that now at all? Or you want to tackle it next month? It's up to you. The other one that is a significant change is the five colon eighty on court duty. That also needs a decision. The text that has actually been suggested by press, instead of talking about court duty as a whole, it actually separates out witness duty and jury duty. And at the time, the, the text that they're proposing actually talks about licensed employees, that this applies to licensed employees only, that they actually would be able to take, isn't it, an absence from, from, from school to, to actually complete either witness duty or jury duty. And the proposal from press is that we actually take out the word licensed. So we'd have to decide whether we want to do that. And obviously by taking out the word license, it would mean that this policy applies to all employees, not just teachers. I, to be honest, that's what we had before. It didn't say anything about licensed teacher, licensed employees in the, in the previous policy. So I see no reason why we should include that this time. It just needs to be separated out into witness and jury duty. It's a bit semantics in my opinion, but the only other one that we need to think about is seven colon two eight five. That is a renaming of the policy and there are some changes to it. That cross references with so seven colon two seventy, which is a policy where we have an undesignedated supply of epinephrine in the school such that it could be used if needed by a student who hadn't got their own personal supply. That is something we have actually adopted in the past. So it shouldn't be too complicated to cross reference this policy with, with that other policy. So those are the, the highlights, the three that I was proposing that board members take away, relearn, inwardly digest and come back next month with your considerations and discussion. And we will vote next month. Is there any other questions about those? I didn't have to lay it out on a table this time. There was only three that really needed it, so.
Just one quick question on the, the last policy. The name change, what, what's our current? Sort of how does the district handle that currently?
So currently we do have undesignedated Epi pens for students and for faculty if needed. You know, it's, it's important to have for the event of either a child doesn't have their own in a time of need, but it's also important because we have had students have their first allergic reaction to a bee sting or otherwise at school. And we're able to provide them, you know, that medication, you know, along with typically calling nine one one and whatnot. But the urgency, you know, to be able to administer it immediately is something that, you know, is, is very helpful in those situations. So that's, am I answering your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. You, you can actually check that policy out, seven colon two seventy. That is the one that specifies that we have that undesignedated epinephrine at the school.
And, and it just means that it's not, it's, it's undesignedated. So any student, any teacher can use it. You know, the dosing may not be a hundred percent accurate for an adult, but it's better than nothing from what we've been told, so.
Okay, so we'll take a look at those particular policies and come back and review those, discuss them and vote on them next month. Okay, sorry, that's the boring bit with the policies. Board committees and representatives. The first one on my list is Ed Tech Committee. I know we stole your thunder a bit earlier, but anything else to report, Nora?
Yeah, DeeDee and I met with administration on May 11th and we talked about the building updates in terms of staff and students. And we have kindergartners registering and looking at the numbers for grades next year. Everything is kind of falling into place. This year at Fairview, we had sixty five new student families, new students and families that celebrated, I think it was an ice cream social and just, this has been one of the parts of our strategic plan is how to welcome new families, how to pair them with mentoring families. It seems to be a successful first year in all of that. The other is DeeDee and I got a sneak preview of the website and gave Patrick some feedback. It was really, really constructive discussion from a parent point of view. The first thing we were like, where's the calendar? We got to find the calendar. And he was like, yeah, let's move this around. And so we looked at it with some SEL concerns as well, like how do kids get in touch with? How do families get in touch with the school if we're closed or if it's summertime? So we feel really good about the work we did there. We also heard about some things like the math competition coming up, all the in-person graduation events and the end of the year assessments that, um, you know, I know all of our students just took the NWA for the end of the year where you'll start to, they'll start to look at the data and that, but also the SEL concerns. And, um, and now that spring is approaching and some of the eighth graders are moving on and just how this school is a home to so many kids and that they have connections with adults here. I love the idea that graduation is going to have like a live feed in the parking lot. So you can just come and hang out at like a drive-through by invitation only.
Not exactly. Not exactly. I, we will have a live stream. It won't necessarily be like a drive-through like our past graduation ceremonies. So I don't want anyone to think there's going to be a big screen and all that. But I believe we're going to have it set up so that if people who don't feel comfortable being within the confined space of the auditorium or if they have young children who need to wiggle, you know, that they'll be able to watch it that way.
Thank you for clarifying.
I don't want anyone disappointed when the big blow up screen doesn't appear.
So, so it's just in full swing. Ed Tech Committee continues on anything else, DeeDee?
Thank you, and I think you're up next too, because next is NTDSC.
Yeah, really quick. NTDSC met on May 12th, so I had two board related meetings last week. It was a busy week. We have eighteen students receiving services from NTDSC, some in satellite, some at Malloy Center. They're thriving, it's an amazing place. The meeting was basically about their building projects. I will say that their executive director is now up to like two to two and a half hour meetings weekly with their building and architecture departments to get the updates on what's happening over there. But I'm getting pictures I can share with you. They have a new sewage line out to the street and they're building new bathrooms and one whole phase is almost done. So that's very, very exciting. But the construction needs, you know, are an ongoing conversation. They're going to hold their graduation at Bridges, which is part of District 219, which is fantastic. ESY is going to be at District 69 and Malloy, so they're all set up for the summer. The, I had the numbers, the population, like the, the enrollment in NTDSC is just skyrocketing. So it's a really good thing that they are building and that we eventually will have space for hopefully a satellite or something, some services here. But just this year from January till now, they've increased from two hundred, I can't do the math right now, but two hundred and eighty-two kids to two hundred and ninety-six in just four months. So mid, mid school year, as a school knows, when you get students in mid-year, there's a whole domino effect. So to have special needs students entering Malloy and their programs throughout the year means they are just constantly meeting student needs, like in a very timely and efficient and effective manner. They have great systems for incorporating kids into their programs. And I'm just, as a special education teacher, I am really blown away by what they do and that we have access to them and we're provided services from them. So I'm super happy to represent us there.
Thanks, Nora. That's definitely the main reason for the building project in the first place is just how much they've expanded in the years. So PTA, did you?
I wasn't able to attend the last in-person meeting because we were at the Ed Tech meeting, but could y'all?
But we had a report. Yeah, that's great. They're very busy. Okay, so freedom of information requests. I can report that there were three freedom of information requests received in this last month and they were handled appropriately. Next item is information items and correspondence. Mr. Secretary, do we have any?
Yes, the board received thank you notes from Carly Gross and Shannon Walder.
Excellent, thank you. Next item is public comment. At this time, the members of the public are invited to address the board on our shows pertaining to the actions of the board and on matters that are in the purview of the board. This is a time for the board to listen to the public. However, the board will not respond or enter into dialogue with commentators at this meeting, as is then advised by IASB. Members of the public are reminded of board policy two colon two thirty, public participation at Board of Education meetings. We'll allow a minimum of thirty minutes of comment, a minute, twenty minute minimum on any one subject if needed. Comments are heard in the order that the members approach the microphone. Members of the public are required to identify themselves and can speak for a maximum of three minutes. The board secretary will keep time and will notify them when there is thirty seconds remaining. That's about it. So are there any members of the public that wish to address the board?
My name is John DelGino. I'm a District Six Seventy Two resident. I have two quick questions. I was previously on the district learning team for social studies. This is, goes back a number of years. And one of the concerns that we had at that time was how the curriculum and social studies would align with the high school. So I was wondering if Mike, next month at the board meeting, who could just address that just briefly? And, and the second question I have is for Jeff, because I understand now that our property taxes, our second installment won't be due as it typically is in June. It won't be due until maybe end of the year, maybe even into the beginning of next year. And I was just wondering how the district is going to deal with the, the lack of the timely funds that we typically have. So perhaps if Jeff, you could address that at the next board meeting too, just briefly, I'd appreciate that. Thank you so much.
My name is Elizabeth Palmer and I have two kids at Fairview. Late last week, just a few days before a white supremacist in Buffalo, New York murdered ten black people at a grocery store, there were three nooses found hanging outside of an elementary school in Evanston. These two events, obviously killing people and hanging nooses from a tree differ vastly in scope, legal implications, and the level of pain suffered by the victims in the larger community. And I don't want to minimize those differences. But these events are not unrelated to each other. They both come from the same kind of impulse. They're both driven by the same kind of fear. About a month before someone hung three nooses outside of an elementary school in Evanston, my fifth grader heard a Fairview student say at lunch that his milk must have come from black cows because it tasted bad. It tasted like it was expired. Now, these two events, hanging up nooses from a tree at a public school and saying in the school room that your milk must come from black cows because it tastes gross. These are obviously different in terms of scope, the, the level to which they violate community norms and the impact they have on people. They're not unrelated to one another. They both emerge from the way that children are formed by the adults around them, not only in their homes, but also at their school. And all of that is to say that I mostly just am standing here now to thank you for moving forward with the equity initiatives and especially to thank you for the time that you're going to put in with Dr. Dubiel in the coming weeks. I know that this is a big time commitment and I want to encourage you to let yourselves be challenged and to, to feel discomfort as this equity work is moving forward. When people who hold positions of power allow themselves to, to sit in the moments of discomfort, I think that sort of diffuses the burden of the inequities that we see around us. And I also think that it helps with these, these forms of prejudice from the tiniest ones to the biggest and most violent ramifications. It helps them to lose some of their social legitimacy. So this equity work is really important. Thank you and please persevere in it.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the board?
Thank you for mentioning that. No, there were no online public comments received tonight.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your comments this evening. Rest assured that the board has listened and we will give in consideration to the points that have been raised. If any of the comments been made this evening require follow-up by anybody from the school administration, the superintendent or designee will contact you directly and discuss the matter further and follow through with the questions. Thank you. So lastly, we have our action items for this evening. First of all, can I have a motion and a second to accept the resignation of a certified member of staff? So moved. Our second, this was already discussed in closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We accept the resignation. So can I have a motion and a second to approve fourteen construction bid packages for the expansion and renovation to Fairview School as recommended by Frederick Quinn Corporation? These packages include concrete, general trades, roofing and sheet metal, EIFS systems, aluminum and These packages include concrete, general trades, roofing and sheet metal, E I F S systems, aluminum and glazing. Ceramic tile, acoustical ceilings, resilient flooring and carpet. Painting, casework, fire protection, plumbing, H vac and electrical and low voltage. I have a motion, a second.
So moved.
One second.
We've already had the the explanation this evening, so I think we're okay with that. In that case, could the secretary please call a roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Boosie?
Yes.
Mr. Akakis?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Downing, Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes. So next item is to approve the renewal of the Director of Community and Student Engagement contract. Again, this was already discussed in closed session, so can I have a motion and a second? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. We approve the contract renewal. Excellent. I'm sorry, I didn't see you behind mic. Okay, and lastly, adoption of the K eight district social studies curriculum for the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three school year. Can I have a motion and a second? So moved. Our second. I think we covered all our questions on this one too, so if the secretary could please call a roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Downing? I vote yes, Mr. Akakis?
Yes.
Ms. Boosie?
Yes.
Okay, you have your curriculum, thank you. So are there any items for future consideration? Nope, I think everybody's keen to be done. Okay, in that case, I shall ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at eight fifteen. Our motion? Could the secretary please call the roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Boosie?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Downing?
Excellent, thank you very much, everybody.